Let's call the order, the City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting Tuesday, January 4th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Hometown Ace Hardware, Milton Piggly Wiggly and Milton City Hall.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Again.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sir, anyone opposed? We have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance. And we are still doing this virtually, so there is a flag over Inga's shoulder. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Is there anyone that has any public comments regarding items that are on the agenda which can be affected by council action? Or is there anyone present that would like to comment on something on the agenda later in the meeting? Is there anyone in our waiting room?
No, there is not.
All right, we'll move on to mayor proclamation. Human trafficking prevention month. And Chief, I don't, did you want to say anything about this before or after I read it?
Uh, no, you can go ahead. I might say a couple things after.
Okay, all right. Human trafficking prevention month, January 2022. Whereas the problem of human trafficking is enormous with traffickers exploiting an estimated 24.9 million victims worldwide. And whereas traffickers are motivated by money and human trafficking has estimated profits exceeding $150 billion per year. And whereas anyone can be a trafficking victim, human trafficking includes forced labor and sex trafficking. And it affects children and adults, citizens and visitors, women and men, the girls and, and boys and girls. And whereas the average age of initial human trafficking entry into the commercial sex industry in the United States is 13 years old. And whereas traffickers often tailor their tactics to the unique vulnerabilities of each victim. They can lie, isolate, control, intimidate, beat, torture and abuse. And whereas cases of human trafficking have been reported in all 72 Wisconsin counties. And whereas the Rock County Anti-Human Trafficking Task Force was established in the spring of 2017. Their mission is to develop and maintain a community network that serves to educate, prevent and respond to victims who have been or are at risk of being trafficked. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim January 2022 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Further, the Common Council encourages community members to attend the community panel on January 20th, 2022 at 6:30 PM, presented by the Rock County Anti-Human Trafficking Task Force, the YWCA of Rock County and the Milton Police Department to learn more about human trafficking and to find out ways you can help. So I'll sign this, the 4th day of January 2022.
So as you know, I am an active member of our county's task force and will be leading the presentation later in the month. Please encourage people to attend and learn more. One of, one of the more memorable things as after I joined the city of Milton was attending the very same presentation at the Milton Public Library where I had my eyes open into what trafficking really was. And that's kind of what got me involved and got me interested in learning more and would love to provide that same information to other people who are curious and need to know more so they can know what to look for in their social groups and families and neighborhoods. So thank you for the proclamation and you'll hear more about the topic throughout the month as we promote the community panel.
Thank you very much. All right, so in 2022, I wanted to try something new and it, we are not, not doing team building. Just in case you were really worried about this. I know everybody was. I know Mark Langer was writing me emails saying, hey, don't forget to do team building. So we're going to try a new format and I'm really excited about it. I'm interested to hear what you guys think about it too. But on the first meeting of every month, so we have two meetings, you know, first and third, on the first one, instead of doing a team building exercise at the beginning or at the end of the meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, we're going to try something called a meeting dedication. And we all, of course, are going to have an opportunity to participate and be the person that decides who we are going to dedicate our meeting to. So when it's your turn to be the person to dedicate the meeting, you get to choose any person alive or dead. Real or imaginary, a family member or someone you've never met before, but somebody that you admire. And then you will share with us what it is, like, you know, a few sentences or a paragraph about how come you admire this person and the values that they displayed or displayed. And why you want to share that person with us. And then you'll ask the council to dedicate the meeting to your person. So I would not ever ask you to do something that I didn't want to do or wasn't willing to do myself. So I'm going to start off our meeting with the, the person that I want to share with you. And her name is Amanda Gorman. And she is a poet laureate. And you may have heard her publicly share her poet, her poetry and her poem at the inauguration of the president. And she has written other poems and is really pretty well known. Why I like her so much and I wanted to share her with the council is because every time I hear one of her poems, um, they speak to me. And they're usually the ones that I have heard that I really like a lot are really positive and motivating. And they give me hope and they give me strength and they give me courage. And I think right now at the beginning of the year where it's maybe not the year we all dreamed it might be, it doesn't hurt to have a little strength, a little hope and a little courage. And Inga has the video of the January 2022 New Year poem by Amanda Gorman. And she's going to play it now.
So let's clarify, I hope I have it. So, so let me know if you can't hear it for some reason, okay?
Okay.
May this be the day we come together. Mourning we come to mend, withered we come to weather. Torn we come to tend, battered we come to better. Tethered by this year of yearning, we are learning that though we weren't ready for this, we have been readied by it. We steadily vow that no matter how we are weighed down, we must always pave a way forward. This hope is our door, our portal, even if we never get back to normal, someday venture beyond it, to leave the known and take the first steps. So let us not return to what was normal, but reach toward what is next. What was cursed, we will cure. What was plagued, we will prove pure. Where we tend to argue, we will try to agree. Those fortunes we foresaw, now the future we foresee. Where we weren't aware, we're now awake. Those moments we missed are now these moments we make, the moments we meet. And our hearts once all together beaten, now all together beat. Come, look up with kindness yet, for even solace can be sourced from sorrow. We remember not just for the sake of yesterday, but to take on tomorrow. We heed this old spirit in a new day's lyric in our hearts. We hear it for old lang syne, my dear, for old lang syne. Be bold, sang time this year, be bold, sang time, for when you honor yesterday, tomorrow ye will find. Know what we fought need not be forgot nor for none. It defines us, binds us as one. Come over, join this day just begun. For wherever we come together, we will forever overcome.
Thank you very much for sharing that together with me. And the, the next meeting, which will be that we do this, will be the first meeting in February. And I will let you know if it's Ryan, Linda or Devon who will go next in February. But it will be one of you. And then of course, we'll do our, our regular team building at the end of the meeting, the second meeting in January. So welcome to 2022. Great. All right. The approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move for approval. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? All right. Discussion and possible action regarding a conditional use permit to allow temporary outdoor storage in a commercial storage container located at 1250 Arthur Drive.
So Mark Warren, who is present this evening, owner and operator of American Awards and Promotions on Arthur Drive has submitted a conditional use permit to place a commercial storage unit, commonly referred to as pods, on his property in the location as shown on the map within the conditional use permit application. The reason for this request is supply chain issues that are kind of plaguing our globe right now. Mr. Warren has indicated that the ability to place this pod would allow him to stockpile materials and receive materials that are kind of held up so he can continue to operate his business. The request is for it to be temporary. Hopefully, all of these issues that we're all facing are temporary. But he does have the ability to extend that request based on a request to the, to the city and Plan Commission. The Plan Commission reviewed this request earlier today and approved the request as presented. One of the aspects of the request is that, as you can see on the map, the location in which Mr. Warren wants to place the pod is to the south of the old, or I'm sorry, to the west of the old car wash that was on that site. Based on zoning ordinances, there would need to be a 50-foot setback from residential properties. It's about, it's about 40 feet. So the Plan Commission agreed that that aspect of it could be waived or, or I guess waived would be the right word for the conditional use permit because this is a temporary request. Administration is in support of this request based on its temporary nature. And now it is up to the city council to review their requests for final approval.
Okay, let's go around and see if anybody has any questions. For staff or for Mr. Warren, Larry, I'll start with you.
No questions, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks. Teresa?
No questions.
Linda?
No, no questions. Thanks.
Ryan?
No questions.
And Bill?
No questions.
All right, is there a motion?
I would move approval of the conditional use permit.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the conditional use permit. And that would include the waiving of the 50-foot setback requirement. Is that accurate? And the second is for that also?
Yes.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. I just have a quick question. Scott is not Devon, right?
No, Scott, Scott Freylik is, is our newly assigned reporter from Jane's Little Gazette.
That's right. Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure that Devon wasn't signed in under another name and I was like breathing right over.
To a clue this weekend or something or.
Okay. All right. Perfect. All right. Number nine, I think Larry will be super excited about. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2022-01, Resolution Supporting the Wisconsin Energy Independent Community Partnership.
So as outlined in the memo, the cities of Edgerton, Evansville and Milton have been in discussions for quite some time about applying for a grant with the Office of Energy Independence to prepare an energy plan for our respective communities. Although a resolution is not a requirement of the grant submittal, I thought that it was probably more formal and inappropriate to have a resolution. They only require a letter of support, but because I think this is something that is, is definitely, you know, talked about in our strategic plan and many council members have reached out to me about these types of things. You know, I'm excited about it and thought a resolution would be probably give a little bit more gusto to our, our, our request. We are still in the process of preparing the grant application itself. It's not due until the end of the month. But as you see in the memo, at this point, we are pledging in-kind staff time in support of the preparation of the grant application. If we are fortunate enough to receive the grant, we will work with a consultant to develop that plan. And, and then, you know, the hope, the next step would be then to effectuate the plan. And hopefully, there would be other assistance from the federal government or state government to assist us in the effectuation of that plan. So the process is still ongoing. Once we have the, the actual application, certainly we'll send it out to the group, but wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of kind of what the purpose of it is, how the phasing of it works and wanted to kind of go on the record from the council's perspective in support of it, if you are, and I don't want it to seem like it's a foregone conclusion. But the, so the purpose of the resolution is, if, if approved, would be attached to our grant application showing support of our governing body. And Edgerton and Evansville have agreed to do the same as well.
All right, so we're just going to start with Larry and that big old smile on his face.
Well, I'm very excited. I, that's wonderful. When I saw it on the agenda, I thought that's a great way to begin, you know, having, be able to put a plan together, be able to fund it to do that. And that's a big challenge for communities is finding the resources to do the evaluation. So and the other thing I'll like, I just offered everybody to, maybe some utilities, local utilities might be interested in being involved as well in this large of an initiative, you know what I'm saying?
Yep, and they will be involved as kind of a partner. They won't be, they won't be named on the application itself, but certainly they will be involved in the creation of the plan. We already have had conversations with Rock Energy Co-op and Alliance Energy, which serves our community as well as portions of, of, of Edgerton. And Evansville is very unique in the sense that they have their own electric utility.
So very exciting. Thank you.
Teresa, any questions or comments?
No, sounds great.
Linda?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Brian?
No questions.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2022-1, supporting the Wisconsin Electric, or I'm sorry, Wisconsin Energy Independent Community Partnership.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, I'll be signing that resolution. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding a work order from Baxter and Woodman to perform general engineering services.
This is similar to last year's Baxter and Woodman has prepared a work order for what we call general engineering services. The work is miscellaneous tasks from time to time as needed by staff or different departments. And at times where existing staff or current staff may not have availability or the expertise. The fees are based on the engineers' standard hourly billing rates and only billed for the actual work time performed. So there's no fixed fee or contract amount at this time for the work.
Any questions or comments? Thanks, Mark. No?
I'll recommend approval of the work order prepared by Baxter and Woodman for city engineering services.
Okay.
I would second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments by anybody? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding continuation of a private lead service line replacement program and filing an application for financial assistance from State of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund.
Well, this is similar to last year with the lead service line program. There is available funding. We could apply for, I don't know, you know, based on the ranking criteria, whether or not it would be funded, but the first step would be the application for the funding. A little summary was included in the, in the memo. In 2021, we were able to replace 40 lead service lines, 26 galvanized or iron service lines that were also eligible, as well as 26 utility-owned eligible service lines. The program would operate in a very similar fashion. The program documents have all been provided to the DNR for review again, and they're attached to the agenda here tonight. The, the program would be 100% funding for eligible properties and eligible properties would be those owned by an individual and residential. So it has to be a residential property owned by a person. It cannot be owned by a business. If we were to change the funding amounts, we could look at that. We would just have to possibly have some further discussion with PSC as far as how that would work. Or if we were to require the homeowners to provide a matching fund as well. But last year, we were able to fund all the replacements that were applied for with available funding. The application this year would be the goal of the same, but again, we don't know what funding levels will be available. So this is the first step to take.
Okay, Brian, any questions or comments?
No questions or comments?
Bill?
Nope.
Teresa?
No, I think we talked about this last year that if, you know, he had said that if more funding became available, we would continue. And I think it's great that he has found more funding. That's terrific.
Yep. Thanks. Larry?
No comments. Great, great project. Thank you.
Linda?
Yeah, this is a great project. I was just wondering with the, you said that it's, it's residence only. What if, what if the situation is like what we have in our downtowns where you have a residence above and a business below? Do they qualify or is that not?
It's, it's based on.
Included.
Yeah, so it's got to be residential property owned by an individual. So if there's a business in the property or if it's a business-owned property, that changes the rules. We could possibly add those. We would have to rework some of our program documents. And we can make adjustments to our program as we go as well. So if, for example, we have enough funding available and the interest is not sufficient that we're using the funding after a few months, maybe we, we would look at or could look at changing some of the eligibility requirements, but there would be some extra steps that would have to be taken with respect to different requirements on the federal and state level.
Okay, thank you. I was just thinking about our, our older buildings in the downtowns. So I think it's a great program. Thanks.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Just to.
Go ahead.
All right, as I'm reading the memo from Mark Langer, he wants two motions. He's asking for two motions. One is to continue with the program on the condition of grant funding being awarded and based on the availability of utility funding is number one. And then secondly, a second motion on authorizing application for the monies from the fund. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes, that is correct. We would have to apply for the funding. We have to have approval to do that. And then I would just ask for support to continue the program if the funding is available.
Yeah. So I don't know if you have in front of you then his memo, which sets forth the language he's asking for the two motions, but that would be what he's requesting.
Okay, I'll make the motion for the approval of Resolution 2022-01, supporting the multi-municipal municipality grant application.
Wrong one.
Wrong one.
There's a, under number 11.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the memo. Yeah, second page. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Linda, will you go ahead and make a motion on this?
Do they have to withdraw the other motion?
Do we have to vote it down? Or can I just change it to what Mark said?
Maybe you could just add some further detail to your motion.
I don't know about anybody else, but I seem to be having a problem with my internet. I'm hearing things after the fact here.
Why, why don't you withdraw your motion, Linda, then we can.
Yes, I'll withdraw my motion.
Linda, it seems like you're a little slow tonight. If you try turning off your video, it might help your internet speed a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Inga.
Do we need to have a withdrawal of the second as well or?
Sure, I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, I would move approval to continue the private lead service line replacement program as presented on the condition of grant funding being awarded and based on available utility funding. Or if changes are desired with those changes.
Second.
Okay, Mark's smiling. Mark has a smiling and he's not speaking. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone?
I would now move approval to submit an application for financial assistance from the State of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries too. All right. 12, Review of November Financial Statements.
Uh, November 2021 financial statements are all attached. I don't see any red flags on them and I've been going through and I've had different departments reach out and we've been working on some things that have needed to be moved through the year, but otherwise there's nothing. Some things that have needed to be moved through the year, but otherwise there's nothing. Outstanding. That seems like a red flag and everything looks good going into year end.
Good job, Kelsey. Thanks. Anybody have any really tough questions for Kelsey, like multiple? Two, three part questions that she would love to answer?
I have a question. Oh, go on. Wondering about. I was just wondering if we are getting close to the position where we can decide if we can give more money in our budget. To the nonprofit groups.
Um, I don't know that off the top of my head. We'll have to work. Al, do you have anything to share? Just say no.
I would say we're not at that point yet. It's not to say that it can't happen or won't happen. I it's just there are. You know, as the year closes out from a financial standpoint on December thirty first, there are still a number of things that. Happen in twenty twenty two that get recorded in twenty twenty one because their previous commitments or encumbrance of encumbrances of funds. That we would need to have that that needs to get flushed through the system before we know what the final number would be. That's why we typically add that conversation in like February, so I would I would anticipate that being the case again this year, so. You you know, twenty twenty one was a very different year than it has been. You know, you can say that about every single year. But there were so many changes that happened in twenty twenty one and things that were kind of unplanned for, for example, Wisconsin Policy Forum. You know, that was an expenditure that was not planned for. So, you know, those are the kind of things that. You know, may chew into that, what we have seen in previous years. So, you know, my gut reaction without really delving into the numbers is that we will not be in the. You know, the position that we have been over the past pre in the past few years with a large amount of money. But it's not to say that we won't have funds.
Thanks for the question, Linda. Anything else for anyone? All right, general items. I want to mention that. KB Sharpening donates sharpening services to the City of Milton, and they did so again, the two thousand twenty one calendar year. So I just wanted to thank them and their staff because that really helps our staff. All year long to have them provide that service, and that helps the residents of the city of Milton. So we just want to shout out shout out to KB Sharpening. Committee reports. Did somebody meet with their committees on Monday?
We had a really good library board meeting, but I'm gonna let Ashley give you an explanation of it. She had a lot of really exciting things.
Okay, so Linda's abdicating her report to Ashley. Anybody else that would like to abdicate their report to us, a staff member or? Mark Warren, he's still here.
Oh, no, but I am gonna say historic preservation meets tomorrow, and then I'll abdicate to Inga for her to report on that afterwards.
And I will be attending that meeting as well. Okay, so staff reports. Ashley, I guess you're off.
Sure. I don't think I shared this with council yet, but we did receive a five thousand dollar grant. From the American Family Insurance Steve Stricker Foundation for Story Gardens. And that will go towards story walk stations that will be installed along the walkway that will circle the whole garden space. So I will actually be talking with the courier tomorrow about that, so hopefully there'll be a nice article in the paper about that, but that's very exciting. So we had a golf grant and a football grant for Story Garden so far. We are gonna have an annual survey go out starting tomorrow on our social media. It's gonna be in the utility bill as well. Just kind of get some feedback on our services and programs, see what we're doing well, see what we need to work on. So if we have a few minutes. Please fill that out. Jamie and I are gonna be doing a video podcast with a kind of wrap up of twenty twenty one. With our like statistics and highlights and everything. Obviously, we're not quite at the level of two thousand nineteen yet, but we're better than we were last or twenty twenty. So we have some fun things that we want to talk about and showcase and show to our community. And. Thanks to the friends of the Milton Public Library. We are gonna be creating a graphic novel comic book collection for adults. I feel like that was one area that we had been lacking in for a while, so thanks to their support, we're able to bring those into the library as well. And then I'm gonna put on my other hat. The job posting for the Drug Free Communities Project Coordinator ends tomorrow. And then hopefully we'll be doing interviews in the next couple of weeks for that position. So very exciting.
Actually, any. I was just sort of adding up in my head. You just mentioned the new five thousand dollar grant in twenty twenty one. What was the grant total?
For grants that we received?
Yeah, you know, foundations and 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 grant kinds of numbers.
Yep, so we had, yeah, it's about. Quick.
We're at at least twenty thousand, at least twenty thousand, and I might be missing some. Ashley and I are actually meeting tomorrow to review everything and start putting together some plans for construction for twenty twenty one. And then we're hoping that maybe we can present to the council and give an update on the project at a February meeting.
It's it's really been impressive to see, you know, these things just kind of marching through the door in terms of. Five thousand here and five thousand there, and it's just really great.
And if anyone knows where another five thousand dollars can come marching in, we'll we'll take it. Just let us know.
There has been a lot of behind the scenes, not a lot of things have been happening outside of the garden space, but Inga and I have been. Doing a lot of work behind the scenes and a lot of fundraising and grant writing, so there has been a lot of success behind the scenes, and I'm very happy with the. Where we're going with the gardens.
Thank you to both for all of your hard work. I know grant writing is like not the most exciting. Process to do, but we really appreciate it because, you know, the rewards are awesome for the community and for the library. Okay, Inga, any updates?
Um, we currently have a job posting out for a part time administrative assistant position at City Hall. It's going to be about twenty hours a week, and then that is going to close. It's going to be a continuous recruitment. We're going to start looking at applications on the tenth, and then we'll keep it open until we have the job filled. We weren't sure exactly how this environment, how many applications we're going to get, so we decided to do that continuous recruitment.
All right, thank you, Jenny.
Okay, so I have a few updates for elections. On Wednesday, January nineteenth, from three to six, Lisa Tolson is Rock County Clerk, will be hosting an election official training. And then after that, there will be Zoom meetings options throughout January and February also. And so far, we've received three completed nomination papers and with the possibility of a fourth coming in in the next couple of days. And so the deadline is still Friday, January seventh at five P M. And then the school board sent over their list of candidates today. They have two seats open for candidates. And then unless there is an influx of all diverse and candidate information that I receive. A primary is not going to be necessary this year. And that is all that I have.
All right, thank you. Chief.
Well, we already talked about the community panel coming up later this month. What I didn't mention was Inga hosted me for a podcast earlier this week. This can be posted next week on the same topic, so please tune into that as well for more information, and that's all I have.
Thanks, and whoever's doing the dedication in February, you're. Now, don't do yourself. Maybe just do someone. I was just thinking of this, like. Be creative. Be creative. Don't all do like the same council member, I guess is what I'm saying.
I called dibs on Mark Warren.
See, see, this is exactly what I was trying to prevent. Okay, okay, moving right along. Sorry, I digress. Mark Langer?
Uh, Christmas decorations have been coming down. We've been picking up Christmas trees as well. We had a water main break unfortunately occur on Christmas Day. That was. Quite a bad one. Little chance of snow tonight, otherwise the weather looks pretty good for the next or the rest of the week, other than it's pretty cold.
What about the wind? I heard something about the wind.
Yeah, I think there was some wind call for maybe tomorrow night or tonight into tomorrow.
I think it starts at midnight tonight and is supposed to go through six P M tomorrow. We're under winter weather advisory because of the wind. Yeah.
Look at that, Mark. You let him upstage you with the weather report.
Hey. More information.
Alexa gives it to me whenever we get a, oh crap, she's gonna respond now, whenever we get a winter weather advisory, so.
Otherwise, yeah, just normal stuff, some maintenance at the tree and plant. We had a furnace go down in one of the buildings, so that was. Kind of not good here in the last couple of days. Normal stuff.
Normal stuff.
I think I could probably request some music for Al, maybe. I say Alexa.
Each day turns to that as our dedication. To Alexa dedications to Al.
Kelsey, is there anything you'd like to add to this joyous city council meeting?
Um, we're working through tax payments at Rock County, and so far through December. There has been thirty four point three nine percent collected.
That's all. Probably getting some water bills paid off too. Okay. Al, take it, everybody? Guess Al.
Yeah, see, no, and I thought for sure that Ashley Kunkel's update would be to provide everybody with the number of visits she had to QuickTrip this year. Because we got, we all got our QuickTrip Rewards twenty twenty one year in review today, so.
Well, I am very disappointed in my numbers. It's much lower than I had.
Yeah, me too. I was only at two ninety two.
Oh, I was only like one sixty eight, so.
Oh, all right, well.
Step up. A whole other league here. Do you get to count Leslie's trips too?
Only if she swipes my card, which she doesn't, so she's got her own card, so, yeah, anyways. No, twenty twenty two, we talked a lot about kind of where we're at with with processes in terms of finances. You know, really where a lot of the focus, at least for the next coming several weeks, is gonna be with the fire department. As everybody's aware, we are holding the press, holding the press conference next week, Monday at the fire station. We are working very diligently. Many of us are on putting together press pieces and getting information put together for that. So that will be, you know, kind of a bigger, we're hoping it's a well attended event that is respectfully distanced based on the amount of cases that. We're having seen growing really quickly, and and economic development has not slowed down whatsoever. Just mentioning it ago a few moments ago about, you know, we have another large proposal coming down the pipe right now that accelerated very rapidly today, so. You know, it's just no rest for the weary, and that's okay. It's it's what we have kind of prepared for and planned for, so. You know, we just keep on going, whether it's twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two, life keeps happening, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, I think that covers it. Um, Ryan, you ready?
Mark, everything good? The numbers? Can take this as yes. Consideration of a motion to convene to close session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section nineteen point eight five subsection one E. Liberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public businesses. Business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons required a closed session. In reference to referendum communications consultants, RFPs.
Second. There is a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, Linda, you're in favor, right?
Yes.
Okay, that was unanimous. All right, thank you, council. And is there further action that you would like to take in regards to? Communication services for the referendum? Linda?
Yes. I would like to make a motion for staff to proceed with Mueller Association. To provide counsel with a proposed contract consistent with the R F P that we were presented.
Is there a second?
I think Brian seconded it.
I seconded it.
Just a point of clarification.
But, yeah.
The the R F P is what we send out. The proposal is what they respond with, so. It shouldn't say R F P, it should say proposal.
Well, right, a proposed contract consistent with the information on the R F P that we were presented.
Consistent with the proposal, yeah.
Linda, you're in such slow motion, it's gonna take us till next Wednesday to get. Is that your understanding of the motion, Ryan? Or did you second it? Okay. All right, any questions about the motion and the second?
And that is Mueller Communications, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And to to be technical, since we're kind of belaboring this anyways, it is Miller. Like Miller, sorry, Miller, like Miller Park.
Right. Oh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Our next meeting date. Uh, for council business is January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty two. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Good job, everyone. I know you're excited that you don't have to do team building. You can thank me later. We will do it on the eighteenth. Get ready for your future dedications. We'll have it throughout the whole year, so. And I've decided to let council go first because I knew that you would want to be the first ones doing the dedications, and then. Staff will go last with Mark Schrader probably doing his dedication in December of two thousand twenty two. All right, that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you. Night all.
Night, stay safe, stay warm.